Mayor and Council. Sorry, I'll start that again. It's 6:00 PM. I'll call our town of Windermere March 3rd, 2022 virtual workshop to order. This particular workshop is to discuss the 30% downtown plans for new development. At this point, since I know we have a lot of people driving and such, we will forego our flag salute and invocation and move directly to Robert to give us a little information about what we're going to here tonight, and then we'll have several presentations. Time for a comment from all members of the public as well as discussion by council. Robert.
Yes, Matt, thank you very much. Again, this is a kind of a hybrid meeting where typically either doing one or the other, really doing a public input meeting or doing a town council workshop. This is kind of a mesh between both because the developer is required to have at least three of these meetings. They have submitted the 30% design, which will be presented to you tonight. What we ask the public and for town council to do is hold all questions until after Brad Cornelius from Wade Trim does his presentation. He is speaking on behalf of the town as our hired planning consultant. Then he'll turn it over to Marcus Geiger with Kim Lee Horn Associates. Now, people might think, okay, well, Kim Lee Horn Associates, aren't they also a vendor of the town of Windermere? Yes, so we use them for a different reason. We use them for stormwater development, road design, and also for the multimodal path. So they are a large enough company so we can segregate different disciplines. So they are doing land planning and development as opposed to what we are currently using this vendor for. And that's why I allowed them to be part of this project with V3 Capital Group, which is the driving force behind Kim Lee Horn Associates, and they are actually the developers of this development. And again, I would ask that anybody that has any questions or comments, if you just type your name and your address into the chat box, we'll call on you in the order that you put it down there. Or if you have a question and you want to write it down before you forget about it, go ahead and use the chat box. I'm not going to disable the chat box because we're not doing the three-minute timeframe. What we do want to avoid is just having repetitious questions. Meaning that if your question's been answered, then you know, I want to go ahead and skip that question. So this can be also be here at some 1:00 o'clock at night, if not longer than that. This will be recorded. It's going to be posted on our YouTube channel as well as the town council or the town of Windermere website. With that said, I'm going to introduce Brad Cornelius with Wade Trim, who's the town's planning consultant.
All right, here we go. Thank you, Robert. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So as Robert said, what you have this evening is your first workshop for the redevelopment of the 500 block in Windermere, downtown Windermere Properties. So I have a short PowerPoint that I'm going to go through. Just so the council is aware, I am not going to actually present their development plan for them. I will leave that to Mr. Geiger to do, but I will give my concerns or comments about what has been submitted with it. So just so everyone is aware that I will let them present their project. So Robert, if you could start my PowerPoint, please?
Can you see it or no?
I cannot.
Okay. This is not going to work because it's not in PDF format. So if you allow you share a screen.
Let me see that. Let me do that. Disabled share. Robert's telling me I have disabled share.
You can do it now. Be quick on the trigger, please.
Cannot start. You got to stop sharing, and then it says I can do it. There you go. All right, what am I sharing?
Your PowerPoint.
Good deal. All right, you got the right thing. Let me turn it to here. Do you still see it, sir?
I don't see anything. Usually PowerPoints don't work. It has to save it as PDF.
All right, let me do that. I'll do that real quick. I apologize. I will get this done very quickly.
Okay, I'm disabling share at this time, just until you're ready.
You may see my wonderful planning staff now. All right.
You ready?
Can you see it now, sir?
Go ahead, share it.
All right, thank you. All right. So as I said, this is your first workshop.
Ready to share it.
All right. Okay, there we go. Can you see now, sir?
Yes, sir.
All right, here we go. We'll start again. So again, as we said, this is your first workshop for the redevelopment, the 500 block of Windermere Development Plan. So with our first I'm having issues. All right. So just as a reminder, and I know everyone is aware, this location is at the northeast corner of Main Street and East Sixth Avenue. The project site contains approximately a little bit over two acres in size, and the property owner is still Downtown Windermere Properties LLC. So that is the location of the property, just to remind. So quickly, what I want to do is just remind everybody of the PUD process because that's the process that we are still in, the planned unit development process. So the town's process has several steps, and I'll just go through these quickly. So initially, they had a pre-application meeting with myself and Mr. Smith in 2019. In October of 2020, they had a conceptual plan review by the Development Review Board, who provided comments. And then their preliminary development plan, as well as their rezoning to PUD and their entitlements, was approved by Town Council in June of 2021, under ordinance 2021-01, which provides for that approval as well as for the conditions for development as they move now into this final, which I say here, final engineering plan or final development plan is where we are today. So what happens in this process is, as you all will probably recall, at this preliminary development plan level, it was very general. It wasn't engineered. And there were still some open questions that were outstanding with that approval, with the understanding as it would move forward, those open questions would be resolved and addressed as part of the final engineering plan. So that is where we are today is with the final engineering plan. So that's the process. And what will happen if this final engineering plan is approved ultimately by Town Council, that would then be their approval to start pulling building permits for construction for that. So this is the last step in terms of their public process in terms of this plan getting approved for development. So that's where we are today. Again, just quickly to remind folks because it's been a year since we did discuss this. This property, why it's going through this, it is located within the Town Center Overlay District as adopted in the town's comprehensive plan. So what that means is this property can develop, but it has to, it has to develop only through the planned unit development process with the approval of a preliminary development plan, which you all approved in June, as I said, June of 2021. And any development there has to be consistent with the design standards of the Town Center Design Guidelines, which were adopted in 2004 by the town, which are still fully in effect within this downtown area. So that's why, this is the purpose of why they're going the PUD process. They're required to do it. And it is consistent with what they have to do and what they're allowed to do under your adopted comprehensive plan and land development code. In terms of the master plan, again, just as a quick reminder, this is the master plan, the Downtown Design Guidelines Master Plan. And the blue circle shows the subject property, which shows that it is within the master plan area, making it eligible to go through this PUD process for development. And again, just as a quick reminder, this orange area, the lots that front along Main Street, that is the building zone. That's where the buildings must be located. They cannot go beyond this line, which is basically the lot line. And then this back part is the parking zone where parking, stormwater, you know, the site pieces, that's where that has to go. So the important part of this is that the building cannot pass this line. And then you have the required 20-foot buffer shown here. That's also required as part of the master plan. On the last piece on the master plan, again, just to make everybody aware, is it also says that this access to this property off of East Sixth Avenue has to be right in, right out only, and it does talk about access out to Fifth Avenue on the other side. So that's in the master plan, and that's how this is moving forward. In terms of your future land use, again, just again, as a refresher, this is adopted in your future land, in your comprehensive plan, on your future land use map as part of the downtown overlay district. It's this property here within that boundary. So again, what that says is that this property can develop consistent with the downtown guidelines and standards on this property with, again, the buildings on the front and then the parking and other site things here on the back on the properties front in Oakdale. So this is also consistent with your comprehensive plan in terms of what's moving forward for consideration. What is the proposed project? And I'm not going to say a whole lot here. Again, they're coming in with proposing at this point the maximum 21,750 square feet of a mix of retail, restaurant, and office space. I do want to clarify my next statement here, where I say it is consistent with the project as approved within the PUD rezoning and preliminary development plan. What that is really saying, and I probably should have worded this differently, it's consistent in terms of it is consistent with the conference of plan. It's in the right location. It has the PUD zoning in place, and it is within the downtown design guidelines. So I'm not referring here to say that they're also consistent with all the requirements of of the project between the ordinance or the standards. I'm just saying it is consistent with, it's in the right area where it should be. So I do want to clarify that in terms of that statement. So in terms of the PUD specifically, as I said, in June of 2021, the City Council did adopt ordinance 20 2021-01, and it provided a series of conditions that now this final development plan or that's moving forward has to be compliant with. So just as a summary of what's in those conditions, and you do have in your agenda packet, you do have that ordinance with the full writeout of all these conditions, but these are the highlights of them. So first, they have to enter into a mitigation agreement with the town for transportation and utilities as part of this process. This is relating to improvements that will occur potentially at the roundabout at Main and Sixth, as well as pedestrian crossings and other improvements that may be needed as they go through this process and determining what their proportionate share of payment would be to the town for those improvements. Utilities, again, that would document what utilities are being provided, clarify and make clear that all utilities are being done at the expense of the developer and not of the town, and they have the responsibility for that. So anything related to utilities, water, sewer, stormwater could be included within that, that agreement as well. At this point, we do not have a draft of that agreement. That hasn't begun. That'll be a process that Mr. Smith and we will begin shortly to bring forward for consideration. But that has not occurred as of today. In terms of the final development plan requirements, there are specific requirements with, of these conditions. And what these conditions say is there needs to be an emphasis on tree protection, mitigation, and landscaping, stormwater management, design standard compliance, utilities, and buffering of surrounding properties. So as they develop this, this final development plan, and as we as a town review it, that, those are the things that we need to be very aware and cognizant of to assure that it is doing those things. Other pieces of construction management, at this point, that's not important. We're at now the initial design sign, but it does provide for protections during construction. It also lists the permitted land uses for the property. Basically, it's the uses that are permitted within this downtown overlay district. Generally, it's retail, restaurants, and offices, and that's what that are the permitted uses in that area. And as Robert said, one of the conditions, and this is our first one tonight, it does require at least three public workshops with the town council to review the plan as it develops. One thing to make very clear here about these workshops is, and the council may remember, there was some discussion when we did at the hearing back in June about when would these occur in terms of a timing? And ultimately, what the town council approved within the ordinance is, is there's not any fixed period of time or fixed part of development of the plan. It's when the developer comes forward and asks to come to the town council for a review and comment and that. So that's how this is moving forward. There's no tie to any specific deliverable or anything like that as they move forward. But again, as we've said with the other process, the more they can give the town early, the better ultimately it can be for them. So this, I'm getting into the plan. Again, I'm not going to present for them. I'm going to just hit a couple of highlights here with what I'm going to do. Then I will go into some of my a few comments that I do have at this point. What you see here, this is the existing site plan. Again, I'm not going to go over this. And Mr. Geiger can do this. This does show what's there. This plan right now does show the trees that are on the X's that propose to be removed. And it also identifies the trees that are surrounded by the circles that are proposed to be protected and maintained on the subject site. So that's what this, this plan is showing. This is the site plan that's been provided at this point. Again, this is early in the process, so this is what we have today. So what I want to point out here, there are some changes to this site plan compared to what was approved with the preliminary development plan back in 2021. So that's what I want to highlight here for the town council and for the public. So in terms of the buildings, under the preliminary plan, the total maximum allowed buildings was 21,750 square feet, and they had that square footage allocated between two buildings. So we still have 21,750 square feet allocated between two buildings. The difference is this building here, so the building at the corner of Main and Sixth, actually got smaller. And still proposed it two stories, which is what was proposed under the preliminary development plan, but it did get smaller in its, its square footage. The second building on this side, it actually got larger in terms of its square footage. So still the total between the two are still 21,750. What changed with this alignment or this layout of this building from the preliminary plan is, and you can see here, the, this building now comes to the building line. This, this dash line here, that's the building line under the plan. So it's still within the allowed area for the building. But they extended it before it stopped roughly about here. And they extended it further this way. But what they also did, they also narrowed it to make this courtyard a bit bigger because one of the trees they're trying to protect is here in the courtyard. So there is a, in terms of the building layouts, they're a little bit, they're adjusted. You know, one building got smaller, one building got slightly bigger. But still, they're still at the 21,750 maximum that could be allowed, potentially that could be allowed. The other change from what you saw in the preliminary plan and approved relates to this corner here. As you may recall, under the preliminary development plan, and when we went through that process last year, this corner was shown as a potential stormwater retention area. Under this proposed final development plan, this is now proposed to be the location, the septic drain field is in this area. And how they're doing that is, and I'll show you on the next page, there's stormwater. It will be what's called exfiltration trend, exfiltration system, which is basically stormwater pipes within the ground to provide for the stormwater retention and treatment. So instead of having a surf water, stormwater system here, it's now in, proposed to be in the ground, and now this would be part of their, their septic drain field in this location here. So that is the other change. The other change that I do want to point out, and I'll have more to say about this here in a moment, is the parking. So under the preliminary development plan that was approved, they did show potentially that they could meet the required parking for this project. And the parking requirement for this project, as established under your design standards, is a flat rate. It's, it's four spaces per 1,000 square feet. So it's, it's different than a property that would develop outside of this, this district for commercial, where that parking ratio would change based on if your office, you know, retail restaurant, it would be based on the use. However, in your downtown district, as part of your design guidelines, it's just a flat calculation of four per thousand for all the uses that could occur within there. So based on that calculation, the required number of spaces are 87 spaces. The preliminary plan did show them meeting that, that requirement. This plan that you have before you this evening is providing for 69 parking spaces. So roughly 18 less than required there. So they have 69 as opposed to the required 87 that was provided in the preliminary plan. Yeah, I'll have more to say that about that here in a moment. Those are really the, the major changes that occurred from what you approved. Generally, when we look at those changes, what your code says about changes to preliminary development plans, that as long as the change is not increasing intensities and densities and resulting in an increased impact, you know, those, these kinds of changes are okay without going back to amend the underlying PUD. So you know, what their changes are, they're still maintaining the, the total floor area, potential floor area, 21,750. That's not changing. So they're not changing the intensity. The change of the stormwater versus the drain field here really, in our opinion, does not create any additional impacts that, but I will have more to say about that here in a moment. So we don't believe that triggers the need to redo the PUD. The issue of the parking is a standalone issue that I will discuss. Just to show very quickly, again, I'll leave this to Mr. Geiger because he's the engineer. This is the exfiltration system for the stormwater that's in the ground. It's not above ground. It is in the ground. This now is showing the septic drain field that's in that corner of the property. So basically showing the pipes that are in the ground, the system that's in the ground. They did a truck routing plan to show how trucks could maneuver through the, the project, and they did provide that. And that's what this shows is how trucks can maneuver through, get into the loading, unloading zone, and to also exit the property. This is their initial landscape plan that has been submitted to it. All I will say at this, well, so for what they've provided at this point is just this plan view. It does have the 20-foot required buffer here on the perimeter. It does show the landscaping on the outside of the wall. We do not have details yet about what the wall will look like or its character, its construction. And we don't have really any details or renderings of what the landscaping buffering would, would look like. Important point I will make here about this is that one of the conditions of this project in that ordinance is impacts to trees, the landscape buffer, the landscaping, those all have to go to the town's tree, tree, tree board. The tree board then, under your ordinance and what you, the authority that you gave them, is to review their plans for the trees, to review their plans for the buffering, for the landscaping, and for the wall, and for them to make a recommendation to the town council about those issues. So there will be quite a bit more discussion, not only with town council, but also with your tree board, and also with the Development Review Board as, as it goes through their process as well. So I do want to make that, that statement. So what I'm going to do now, I'm going to hit, I'm going to go over basically what I see as some very significant issues that we've identified at this point. I will also say that what I'm going to present does not discount or minimize any other issues that concerns that any town council member or any member of the public may have. But these are the, this is the significant issue that I do want to raise to the council so that they are aware. So the, my first issue, and I'll go back to the parking, is as the town council may remember, and if we have any Development Review Board members here on our meeting, throughout the two years of the PUD process of the rezoning of the preliminary development plan, it was consistently presented and in our staff reports and public hearings and workshops that we raised a concern that because of the way the preliminary plan was developed without really any engineering to it, that if, when it came to engineering design, which is where we are today, that they can't fit the parking, that they're showing that they said they could, basically where they said on the preliminary plan, they couldn't meet it, that the 87 spaces. But if, when they get to that part, and they get to this engineering part, and they can't meet that, they have to address that with the town council. And there is a specific condition within the ordinance about what happens if we end up in this situation. And we have ended up in this situation, but I do want to make sure that everybody does understand this concern has been relayed to the applicant from the beginning. And now we, now we're at it. So what the ordinance says in terms of where we are, in terms of their parking cannot be, or is not being met based on the proposed plan, the ordinance provides for two options, and then there's a third. So what the ordinance provides under the conditions is the town council has the ability to provide for a reduction in required parking if it can be demonstrated, and if the town council agrees that the reduction in parking is specifically for protection of the existing tree canopy. So the, the, the condition says that you as council could approve a lower if you determine that that reduction is because of them protecting the existing tree canopy significantly. That's option one. Option two, under the condition, is the town council, which is provided for within your code, may, you do not have an obligation, you do not have to do this, but you may allow the developer to pay a fee in lieu of providing those missing parking spaces to the town to allow them to have a lesser amount. That fee would then be determined based on a value that the town would come up with on that payment. But what's very important about that, the town does not have to agree to that. It's completely at the option of the town council if you want to do that or not. There's no obligation for you to do that. And the third option, which is what we would consistently present with our staff reports and our presentation, was reducing the sizes of the buildings to meet the parking that is available or can be provided. That's the third option. So based on what they are providing in terms of the parking, based on the number of spaces they have, it, from a quick calculation, it would support a building, a maximum building size of 17,250 square feet. So that's how much the, the building would have, the buildings would have to be reduced to a maximum of 17,250 square feet to be consistent with the required parking. So that, that, that is an issue I did want to significantly highlight because that is a very critical issue. It also does bring a lot of the other issues together because it does now relate to the protection of the tree canopy and trees on the site. So it does kind of bring those pieces together. So I think that is a very, very critical part. Again, there's other concerns and issues that are there, but I think from my perspective, that is the most significant one to be dealt with. Another comment that I have is not as nearly as significant, but I think important, is related to the relationship here with the properties across Oakdale. Let me get to the landscape plan. Along Oakdale. So as you can see, the wall, which is this dark line here, and again, we don't know what it's going to look like yet. We don't have any of that information yet. The wall doesn't continue along this line. It goes basically around, and at the time in the preliminary development plan, it shows the same alignment where it actually went around the stormwater pond and came back this way. My concern is with this now being a drain field, I think that is no longer appropriate for that to come around it. And that this wall would need to be extended along, along the Oakdale frontage here to the property line with the landscaping. So to complete the six-foot wall completely across. I will say I did speak to Mr. Geiger about that, and you know, I'll speak for him. He can speak to it. He, you know, he did indicate to me that Um, I will say I did speak to Mr. Geiger about that, and you know, I'll speak for him, he can speak to it, he, you know, he did indicate to me that. That is not a concern, that they they would be able, willing to do that. So that's just another piece to help to relating to buffering and protecting the residents that are on this side of the project. So with that, let me see, I think those are the. Yeah, many of my other pieces in my comments are, right now, we don't have the information yet. Um, you know, the other pieces that we haven't seen that will have to come in front of the town council as part of these three workshops. Is they have to provide us their building elevations. What are they gonna look like? What are the colors gonna be? What are the buildings going to be? That has to be provided to to the town council as one of these workshops to go through that review. We don't have that information yet. I I believe that will come to us, but we don't have that yet. Um, again, with similar with the landscaping, um, you know, a more detailed landscape plan showing. You know, the renderings, what it's gonna be, what it's gonna look like, how it's going to provide that buffering that is needed for the properties there on the other side of Oakdale. And again, as I said earlier, that would also then go to the tree board and ultimately also to your development review board to look at. Um, so we don't have that, we don't have that. There's other requirements about lighting and and other signage, which we don't have any of that information as well at this point. But they will have to be providing that additional detailed information over these next two workshops. So it gets vetted prior to it moving forward into any kind of public hearing process. Um, so with that, that um concludes my my presentation, um my information. And I will now turn it over to uh Mr. Geiger and he can provide um the applicant's presentation.
Anna, thank you, Brad. Um, my my name is Marcus Geiger. I work with uh uh Kim Lee Horn. And I work alongside the the V three team, um who's the developer on the project. Um, I I also have on the line, uh Hao Chow with uh Kim Lee Horn, one of my a- associates. Um, as as a part of this uh this uh projects, we we came in after um a kind of the first step was com- completed. And uh uh we wanted to make sure that we took into account all of the um design details that. Um, were already kind of kind of put in place for the the property. Um, let me see if I can show your screen.
Uh, I'll go ahead and allow you to share a screen. Give me a second. All right, you should be able to do so.
Uh, can you guys see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And as as uh as as we 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 came along in in this process, we were excited to to um. Um, collaborate with with this product as we uh do also have have various other. Our products in the the town of Windermere. Um, how how did you want to kind of elaborate on on a few other ones? That we are currently doing and how we are going to look to implement the um the the feel of the types of products that we are currently working on with this type of a project.
Sure thing, Marcus. Um, Hao Chow, Kim Lee Horn, I have had the pleasure for working with the town for quite a few years now, working on. You know, your C I P projects, which often include drainage, uh dirt road improvements. And you know, along with that, we've done a lot of landscaping, architecture work for the uh for the town. And I I I know that one of the concerns and one of the important factors of the site plan is that landscape uh architecture capability. And I just want to stress that although I am not directly involved in this project, you know, we do have a landscape team that understands the town's preferences. Has experience, we design, you know, the Butler and Bestie rain gardens, we're designing Ward Trail. And so that same team can help Marcus out on this project to make sure that the landscape goals and visions of the town are met. Through this project, and you know, I'd be happy to assist along the way, but I'm not directly involved. But from a landscape perspective, we do have the staff that has the experience um to to cover those needs for this project. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so getting into the uh the the weeds on the layout of this uh project, we. Um, were were sure to in in include coming off of Six Avenue, the the right turn lane as was required in the the P D documents. For um site access uh coming in, you'll notice that you we have this large landscape island. Um, this was the the first feature that you'll see as you're coming in as a measure to save these two large oak trees. In the the middle of the site. Um, this was a measure along with this courtyard up. Uh, between buildings one and and two. Um, we 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 wanted to use these features to not only save the trees, but also to add more um. Site characteristics that would help enhance the 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 look of the property. Uh, moving forward, we um also specified that we're um going to be using these uh uh pavement systems. Um, these are permeable pavement systems that will be um placed on top of exfiltration trenches. That Brad kind of mentioned at the beginning, where this will be an underground um drainage process. Where we aren't going to uh use a a a above-ground retention system. Um, but we'll use underground systems so that we are provided more um possibilities for onsite parking. And then for the the septic drain field that um we will have to use as that part of this process as. There isn't any gravity sewer available in the the uh vicinity. Um, we wanted to make sure that as um we got deliveries on the the site, we had a loading zone. Um, at the back of the property so that vehicles would be able to pull off of the the main drive aisle. And still be able to provide uh clear access throughout the uh property as needed. So that they could 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 pull off and unload and load as as they would uh see see fit. Um, moving into the drainage design, we um a- as I mentioned, have these underground. Um, exfiltration trenches. It's it's a pretty much large corrugated um metal pipe wrapped in stone. Um, all of the onsite drainage will flow into these onsite systems where it'll perk into the the groundwater. Um, this this site is a great site for this type of a system where we know that the groundwater table is at least ten ten feet deep. Uh, below the the surface to allow for uh perked. We 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 have been coordinating with uh geotech teams to make sure that we have the proper soils underneath these uh systems. Which is going to be very important uh moving forward. Um, just to make sure that there's not an issue in the the future where there's any clay underneath them and it causes. These systems to to back up. So as we get further into design, um this will be hammered home where. Um, we'll uh ensure that there is no um clay systems underneath these uh uh systems designed for. Um, perk into the groundwater so that we have proper uh drainage throughout the life of this uh project. And as you can see, there's also um about a thirty percent plans for u- utilities currently. Where uh we know that we will use septic on onsite. Um, we're tentatively planning them in the the loading zone. Um, along with the grease traps, but um these haven't met their final resting place quite quite yet. We are probably going to look to uh relocate these outside of the the loading zone. Um, there there have been some concerns voiced about um having these in in such a heavy loaded area. So we will look to uh relocate these potentially. Um, onsite septic will flow to the drain fields at the uh uh northeast corner of the the site here. Um, Brad Brad mentioned earlier that um this was originally planned to be a retention system. But uh due due to um the fact that we can use onsite exfiltration. We uh took the opportunity to use this 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 area for the drain fields. And because of that, we now have the opportunity to um extend this uh wall all all the way across. Um, so so as to provide better screening from the uh neighbors across the the street from us, um across from Oakdale. Along with the plan set, we've included the routing of large trucks as as we are anticipating during such events as. Uh, in in the event there's a fire, just to show that there isn't going to be um an issue with a large fire truck clipping. Uh, curbs or clipping parking spaces, um and that they can properly access and egress from the the site. On on top of that, we wanted to make sure that large trucks that were going to potentially have to access the the site would have a place to properly pull in. Uh, making sure that the the right-hand turn lane would be able to take the truck uh maneuver. Or without having to have the truck swing out into oncoming traffic, but to be able to just that turn directly into the the property. As I I have mentioned, we also made sure that the truck had an area where it wouldn't have to to block traffic. But it could actually pull into this loading zone and still allow for uh passenger vehicles to uh pass as a day-to-day business. Uh, continued forward. Um, and then just some some uh details. We um are still in the early stages of getting the landscaping done. We wanted to provide just an early conceptual con- con- configuration. Um, we understand that this uh first first meeting, there's there's going to be a bit of a feedback. So we um wanted to get as much feedback in this first uh meeting and then. Um, a- a- after this one, meet with the tree re- review board to really see what we uh need to tweak. Before we fully get into the weeds on uh uh really integrating the landscape features of this uh site. But I have I have rambled on for a bit now. I think that the V three guys are probably eager to jump in. Um, Brett, Trey, do you guys want to add some um, if you guys want to chime in?
Uh, sure. Uh, good evening, folks. Um, my name is Brett Darjust. I'm the uh director of development for B three Capital. And we also have Trey Vick, who's our company president, and uh Keith Silverman, who's development coordinator working for me. Um, we have been uh hired by landowners um downtown Windermere Properties LLC. To develop this property on their behalf. We have, uh, we're we're a developing company based in Apaca, Florida, and and we have a very long history here in in central Florida. I'll I'll let uh Trey speak a little bit to the company um in history in a minute. Um, but um what we wanted to do with this first uh meeting is to uh introduce ourselves. We've already had a a kind of a a pre-town meeting, if you will, with Brad to be proactive. Uh, uh, in interacting on this project and and Marcus was involved in that. Marcus has been involved with us. Uh, from the time we started on this project. Um, and uh I think we have, we we have some other exhibits that have kind of come up in between. The time that these plans were prepared and submitted and now that may answer some some of the questions that that came up on Brad's presentation. And we can kind of go through those things um as as time uh goes on. If Trey, do you wanna maybe maybe give a a quick and dirty on on B three Capital and and who we are?
Sure. Um, so we'll fix our camera here since we were given some uh feedback on our ceiling, so you can actually see who we are. So there you go. How are you? I'm Trey Vick. Um, B three Capital, so we're a local firm. We've been in the town, I'm born and raised here in Florida. Uh, we have a history of uh doing triple net lease development, vertical retail. And other types of commercial development here in town. Uh, the principals of this company that owns the site are longtime partners of mine. Uh, and are actually Windermere residents. Um, so what I wanted to assure you all and the residents that are on this phone and the town council members. Uh, and the tree board members, our goal is to collaborate with the entire group here in this town. Um, you know, this is a place that uh the folks that own this project and ourselves that are helping to get it uh brought to fruition. After a long time of planning and thoughtful design, uh, we'll use this asset. Uh, this is a community benefit that we see. Uh, we think it's an opportunity to provide some uh some shopping. Uh, some restaurant options and some other retail options to this community that can be well received. Um, and we understand the sensitive nature of any type of development or redevelopment. And so, uh, you know, what I'll share with you as as the principal of B three, we're gonna do everything we can. That is within uh our our realm and what's economically feasible. Uh, and allows this project to be feasible to accomplish um the needs and the desires and and the focus. Of what this town is all about. We understand the unique characteristics of the town of Windermere. Um, and so I can just tell you that we'll continue to be thoughtful of that uh with a mind of still needing to hold to the principles of what. Uh, you know, this development needs to be and can look like, uh, and and bring some best practices uh from other towns that have been successful with projects very similar. So um we'll have public opportunity with this. This is the first of three meetings that has been said. Uh, and so this will not be the last time uh we are talking about this or the last time we all see each other. Uh, and hopefully at some point we'll do this in person. I think sometimes that's a little easier than be a Zoom. Uh, but in today's day and age, we uh we've gotten pretty comfortable talking to uh little faces on a screen. So, um, you know, with that, I'll I'll uh turn it over again. Uh, Marcus and Brad and Keith have worked diligently on the details of this project. And um I'll let them cover anything else that's important for you guys to know about and then take questions.
Marcus, do you have additional exhibits that you need to share?
Um, I I I think that that is it for now. Um, uh, do you have anything else that you you want me to pull up prior to?
You know what, Marcus? If if you hand me the um the site plan that we had made some notes on recently. That shows the decreased square footage of of um building one. And we and and I can, we can chat real quick about the the notes that we've made on that that may uh alleviate maybe some of the. Passing issues and and certain other things.
Okay, yeah, let me uh let me pop up this this here.
Just clarification too, is uh neither Brad nor I have been privy to these adjustments. Uh, so we don't really know if we can comment specifically on these. In addition to that, uh, I know that a lot of you are familiar with Howe from Kim Lee Horn Associates. But understand that they will not be doing reviews of this project. Um, that will be done by Wade Trum and other management. Jurisdictions.
Oh, uh, Robert, I think you 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 have to to.
Yeah, I was, I was just waiting till you're ready. I've learned the hard way a couple times.
All right, can you guys see this?
Okay, so as you can probably see tell from this, other than the the fact that we uh kind of whited out the asphalt line. Which was just a line that showed the heavier duty asphalt for the travel path. Um, it's ostensibly the same site plan you all have in the package. Um, the the items that have changed, um, and and this is, this is an ongoing process with us. So what we didn't want to do is um submit a package and then kind of, you know, wait. For everybody's notes before going back. We want to be able to kind of allow this this deal to flow on our side as well. Knowing that we know what what's been submitted and and obviously the the changes are gonna be nothing but. Uh, more addressing concerns than creating new ones. So, um, and and I think probably the biggest item on our side is that we collectively as a development company, along with the owners. Uh, had decided that um in order to keep this deal feasible, um, and probably more in tune with the town. Building one has resorted back to a single story. Um, if you, you know, from from our perspective, from development perspective, going to a second story on that. Um, is going to provide for the addition of elevator space, stairway space, unleaseable space. Um, and and it's much more expensive uh on our side to build a second story. We felt that um in the interest of uh keeping the development. Um, more kind of in tune with the scale of the town, getting back to a single-story building. And and unfortunately, um, for us, uh, giving up some square footage in the process makes the deal a little more. Uh, workable for our our, from our perspective. Um, so with that said, we've we've shrunk the building down to a single-story, twelve thousand five hundred and seventy-five square foot building. Um, and then what that does kind of by default is change our parking requirements. Or our our parking, yeah, our parking requirements a little bit. Yeah, our parking requirements a little bit. So while we're still providing right now, 69 spaces are required per the the town code. It goes to 78. So what we're really talking about is the the subtraction of of nine spaces. And so which, you know, I hope we can, we can, you know, throughout these these next couple of meetings, try to figure out how to deal with those. The other item, and Marcus alluded to it in his presentation, was because we're now going to the onsite septic. And and I noticed a note up there that that asked about a hump for the the site. First of all, that wall will now run straight across the back of the property along Glendale. So we won't have that cut out. There was a comment about there's a, there was a reason for that that wall to be placed the way it was originally. I think that with with the change to the the type of of septic system that we're going to be installing on the property and having a wall, an architectural wall, screen wall that runs along the, you know, straight along the back of the property, makes it probably a little more desirable. And by default, the neighbor is not going to be staring in either a retention pond or or something else. The the system as installed will not most likely require any sort of hump over the top of it. We've got enough where we can dig down, like like Marcus was saying, we've got about 10 feet before we hit the water table. We can get our system in above that and and not have to provide for what you would refer to as a hump in the ground. So it should be flat grass area. And with that, obviously, those trees on the on the northeast corner will all be saved as well. So I think that'll that'll be a little more desirable. That was kind of the big change. We we also, and I don't, I don't think we want to get into this right now. We have, as of a couple of days ago, come up with some preliminary elevations for the buildings. I think what we'll probably do is save those for the second meeting where we can kind of get some of the questions out of the way on the site on this. And then we can kind of move into comments regarding the building design in the second meeting.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. So council, at this time, we can have council questions addressed with some council discussion, or we can opt to have public input prior to our discussion and questions. So I'll just look to council for some direction on that. I'm flexible.
Fair, I'd like to hear the public comment before we provide ours.
That sounds good. Any objection to that, council?
Nope.
Seeing none. Okay, we will have this opportunity now to hear all public conversations and comments and questions. Robert, why don't we start with the chat box? I saw those building. I I will ask, go ahead.
If I can, Brad, if you can share your screen. So when they, you pull up like the the tree survey, the original site plan, we can go from there. Just understanding that the one that was just provided to us reduces the first building from 14,750 to 12,575 in one story. So allow you to show the screen. You're muted.
I'm sharing, Robert, and I can start sharing. Thanks, sir. Okay, there we go. So we'll go to the first plan. So this is the existing conditions first plan or first plan sheet. It's existing conditions. And what this plan shows, as Robert says, currently, what has been provided to us, again, we haven't seen anything new from the developer. This does show you the Xs where they're proposing to remove trees and then the circles around these two trees and this tree to be preserved.
And Marcus can answer this question, you know, from it going in two story to one story. The actual footprint of the one story building, building one is not changing. Is that correct?
Correct.
So we can still use the building one as a footprint, Brad. It's just not going to have a second story. It's just reducing that that square footage that's up there in order for them to accommodate some more of the parking. The first person I have is Daniel Floyd, if you want to unmute and then ask you a question.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so my question was around the drain field design. Is the surface going to be flat? And I think you covered this a little bit, but I was curious, will there be standing water? Or is this going to be standard dirt that's flat? Or will it be a depression where there could potentially be the standing water?
No, that 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 area is going to be 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 flat. Due to the depth of the water table, we we're looking to have have more of a flat, flat surface there. And then make sure that there's there's not any standing water out there. I I I know that there are many residential drain fields that do have the the hump. But that comes about as a result of, if you have a shallow water table, you want to make sure that you set your drain field above it. But since we're so so deep here, we 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 don't see there being an issue with having the the hump out there.
This is going to look like basically a flat field with grass on top. Sounds like, okay. Thank you.
Next person we have is Angela Withers.
Okay. Two questions. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. The first question was, I just did what I was saying, that I felt like it would be best if these meetings can be held at Town Hall. I know most of us are used to Zoom meetings, but not everybody is. And some people feel a bit intimidated about dealing with them. And I think it is possibly easier to see a lot of these plans and things for some people when you can be there and actually communicate directly. That was just my first comment. My second one is that on the building, it is much closer to the roundabout, the the southwest corner of the building. It seems like it would look much more attractive if that corner could be sliced, cut off a little bit so that you have a sense of coming around the roundabout. It's going to be very close to that turn now for visibility. And I think you could bring the landscaping, et cetera, around much better if you could somehow cut off that corner. Thank you.
We we actually have the architect team on. Brett, did did you want to handle this? Or did you want the Scott Cora Correa team to to jump on this one?
Hey, yeah, this is a, this is Trey with V three. You know, I think that there's a lot of things that we could explore on that process. I I do believe, though, you're going to have pedestrian walks along there. And I think when you see this in more than just a 2D image, and we can start to show some elevations and what, there's a tower element there. You know, I think you'll see the architecture looks a lot less rigid than it seems in a 2D model. And so that I'd probably say, and and I agree with you on the in-person meetings, by the way. I I think that does make this easier when possible. So we're doing the best we can with the situation we have. But I do think when we can do the next meeting where we can show some architectural elevations and really kind of walk through that aspect of it, you know, we can address that concern. Then, once you can see really what the building elevation and architectural elements will have on the on the facade itself to soften the physical building. And then I think we might might already address that concern visually as opposed to talking about it on a 2D level.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Just a question for me. You wouldn't go from a 2D to facades and whatnot until you have the basic footprint guidance, correct?
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. What we have is 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 two dimensional elevations, really to to do architectural studies on on finishes and roof lines and things like that. But by the time we get to our next meeting, we will actually, as part of that, provide a conceptual drawing that will give you a three dimensional view. And we'll probably try to work it as a view from the court, from the roundabout.
Okay, thank you. Next person I have is Susan Carter.
Okay, I'm going to apologize because I didn't receive this information until this afternoon. And I've been on a meeting all day, so. I have several questions. I'm preliminary. My first question really has to do with, out of all these trees, it appears that we're saving three. That's disappointing coming from the tree board stand or from a tree standpoint. I do have a question if this is how this is going to proceed. I do want to understand where you're planning on paying the drain field, even though many of those trees are outside of the wall and on the on the northeast corner are on town right of way. There's also, what plans are there or are they going to be, or I'm requesting that there be a tree protection zone for those trees. They're very large. Their DBH is about 30 to 48 inches DBH. And so it's going to require a more extensive root zone. That's my one one question. I have an additional question about the ones you're being that, because I can't tell on the two that you plan to save in the within the driveway, I can't tell how large that space is that you plan to put around them.
No, you're right. Susan, we actually have our arborist on the phone with us. They can chat a little bit about what's being saved versus what's being removed. And specifically about the two trees there and the tree in the courtyard, the size. Eric, Eric, I believe you're still on the line.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. Do you mind giving some background on on your qualifications and then background on that that tree area there?
Well, just so a little background on what I've actually done to date is I was asked to go out and and assess inventory and assess the trees. The inventory was basically taking the existing survey and using that to to locate the trees, not locate them, but find the trees on the survey and and identify them and assess them. And there were 64 trees shown on the survey. I added an additional eight, 18 that weren't on the survey. Of those trees, 31 are considered as invasive species, Queen's palms, camphor trees, China berry and golden rain. And and then I, you know, I assigned a condition rating to the to the trees as far as what their overall condition rating was and, you know, submitted the re submitted the report. And then I got the site plans back the other day. We discussed those those three trees. The one tree in the up near Main Street in the courtyard. I, now that I know what trees are specifically being saved, I'm going to go back out to the site and and look at those trees specifically as far as canopy spread and root zone protection and that type of thing. Susan, I believe the tree in the courtyard. You know, I don't know if we'll have to do any canopy trimming or not for the building clearance because I did not measure the canopies when I was there. As far as the root zone, I think it's a pretty adequate root zone. It may have to be root pruned a little bit on either side of the edge of the sidewalks on either side of the building. But otherwise, I don't think too much needs to be done. And the same with the same with the two trees in the between the parking and the and the building in that big round circle, I I would have, I believe it's about a 50 foot diameter in that circle. So again, that should be a pretty adequate root zone. And because the tree is extending over parking areas, there shouldn't be any interference issues with the canopy. So I don't think much will, if anything, will need to be done to those two trees. The only other trees that are being saved are a group of trees on the north that was mentioned earlier on the northwest corner along Oakdale. Some fairly large diameter oaks, although they're not very good trees. They're not in very good condition. They've been severely pruned already and they're leaning over Oakdale. There's one in that group that's pretty good. The others are not really anything substantial. Does that answer your, does that answer your question?
It it does somewhat. I mean, one of those has a rating of like 75% previously and.
Which one, Susan?
Number 283, 38, 30 inch DBH. And then there's another rating, two of 70%. One is a 48 inch DBH and one's a 44 inch DBH. So I guess my question, I mean, they need, apparently, if we are going to end up losing all these trees, I would like to see as many protections as possible. And certainly those root zones protected. I have also requested who, and I did submit some questions earlier about who would be who has been hired to oversee and what when they're coming in and who's been hired, is he like arborist, are you hired? Are you here just for this meeting? Are you the long term arborist on site for this project?
Eric will be, Eric will be the our arborist throughout the entire project.
Okay. I had, let's see.
Susan, as far as the, just to comment on your comment on those trees on Oakdale. You know, since they're adjacent to that drain field, you know, there really is, and and they're already kind of in the Oakdale, edge of the Oakdale right away. There's really not really going to be any any need for much tree protection. I mean, there, you know, if there's going to be equipment in there doing the drain field and so forth, we can certainly put up tree barricades to keep the equipment out of the, you know, any any critical root zones.
And I'm requesting that.
Yes, and I and I'd already suggested that in my arborist report, anytime there's any work within the critical root zones, the tree barricades be be put up. So, yes.
I mean, I
And I had written the report before I saw a site plan as to what trees were going and what trees were staying. So I just had to write some generic language as far as root barrier, tree barricades and canopy pruning and and that type of thing. So now that I've got
Apologize, I haven't seen, like I said, I just got this information, so.
Susan, to remind you as well is that they are required to go in front of the tree board with their mitigation plans. And it is up to you guys to make your recommendation to town council whether to accept them or not. Is that correct, Brad?
Yeah, that's correct. And Ms. Carter, as as Robert said, there's very specific condition within the ordinance for this project that gets to your exact concerns that we don't have yet. They have not submitted what, let me read real quickly what that that condition says. It says detailed plans for landscaping and and retention removal must be submitted as part of the proposed final development plan. The owner shall make all reasonable efforts to protect the existing tree canopy. Landscaping shall be installed and trees may be removed only as approved by town council. Further in its tree retention removal plan, the owner shall comply with section 5.01.00 through 5.01.18, 18, which includes specific requirements for protection of trees during development based on American National Standards Institute A dash 300 series requirements of the town's code of ordinances related to pre-seduction and mitigation. And Ms. Carter, as you said, the ordinance also requires them to engage or retain an arborist to assure that they provide the information that's needed for the tree board to evaluate this and make a recommendation and also to assure that things are complied with as if this moves forward. So all of that that I just read, we don't have any of that yet. None of that has been submitted to the town. That's why you don't have it either. The only thing that we received related to trees is what you see on the existing condition plans with the Xs on it.
Okay.
That's all, that's all we have at this point. So that will be coming because that is required for them to submit.
Okay.
We have, we have a a number of site plans that that show invasive and non-invasive species to be removed and in a non-invasive species to be. We have, we have a, a number of site plans that, that show invasive and non-invasive species to be removed and in, uh, non-invasive species to be. Retained and, and saved. And we're, we will probably submit that to you all through Eric. Before the next meeting, before the next workshop. So. The package is in preliminary form right now. We're all reviewing it to make sure that we're comfortable coming to you all to talk about it. But I would say that we have something to submit to you within a week.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Sure.
I think that's all for me for right now.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Well, we're continuing to go down the chat box here. Next up was Brandy Haynes, eight three five Oakdale.
Hi, this is Brandy. I have a couple of questions. Some of them are in regards to trees, but I have a few other ones first, and I'm not sure who would need to answer this, but. Piggybacking off of what Angela said regarding the front corner of the building. I know that for an intersection, there is a visibility triangle that's required, and I'm not sure what it is for our town ordinance. But I am curious as to what that visual triangle equivalent would be for something like the approach of a roundabout, because it does seem like the building is going to be visually impacting seeing traffic in that roundabout.
That's, that's, that's a good question. I, I, I believe what you're, you're referring to is the, the site triangles for cars approaching roadways. The good thing about the relation of where Sixth Avenue is, along with where that, that building is located. We, we use the site triangles to make sure that as cars approach a perpendicular. Drive aisle or a perpendicular roadway. In, in this case, it would be the roundabout. We want to make sure that, that, that they're able to see any. Cars coming that could potentially hit them as, as, as they enter into the flow of traffic. So in this case, as, as the car is heading. Along towards, towards Main Street, going towards the roundabout. The associated site triangle would be in the opposite direction of Building One, where they would be looking for a car that's coming around the, the, the corner. Just to make sure that if they have to yield, that they have time to, to stop, and if not, they can, can continue forward. Once they, they get to the roundabout, they'll be past that building corner and will, will be able to, to see any cars entering that roundabout. So. For, for, for this case, we don't have concerns with impeding the site triangles for the, the roundabout, just because of the geometry and how the traffic patterns flow.
My next question is that the, on the. On the drawing that was presented tonight, which I'm understanding is now not what you guys are doing, but. With the two-story building, the square footage was supposed to be the seventeen thousand two hundred and fifty, and now you guys are saying it's being reduced. Is that to twelve thousand five hundred and seventy-five?
Ye- yes, and, and after we, we had. This, this site plan submitted to the, the city, there was some additional coordination. Between the, 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 the V three team and the architects, just trying to see what, what, what we could do to, to better make this site, site work. That, that building one, it's going to still have the same, same footprint. But we're going to look to take the second story off of it, where that's going to bring the square footage from the fourteen, seven fifty that you, you see in the picture here. To the twelve, five, seven, five.
So the original. Building, then the second story was only going to be two thousand square feet?
Correct.
Okay, I guess that wasn't really very clear in the earlier ones, but, okay, so now in terms of. The, the trees, I know that in the courtyard, you know, and I did some rough measurements. With the drawings because I was able to print it out, but it looks like it's about twenty to twenty-five feet for the, the tree's perimeter in the courtyard of where you would have non imperme-, or yet you would have not pervious. Shoot, you know what I'm saying, not concrete. In terms of the one in the parking lot, I know that the arborist was saying that, that, you know, it's a parking lot and therefore there wouldn't be a need for raising the canopy or whatever, because it's a parking lot, but the reality of that is. Is that those trees all do have a pretty large canopy and you have a truck zone coming in here, which is going to include box trucks. And also potentially fire trucks, God forbid there's ever a problem. But I, I'm assuming that there's going to need to be some, you know, raising of the canopy in order to accommodate delivery trucks coming in there. So I do think that that's going to impact those. I'm also curious, you know, in terms of all this underground exfiltration system. Which, you know. I'll be curious to see what South, has anything been submitted to South Water Management District regarding that? Because I would think, one, that that would be a bit of a difficult. Cell, but I also would think what are going to be the impacts to the trees of that whole underground system being there? Because it's not just, you're putting impermeable surface, or that we're using dirt here or whatever, you're going to have this whole exfiltration system then installed underneath. That pavement in the paver style that you're using that's supposed to be permeable. So that just seems to me to mean more depth, more impacts to the root zones. You know, both deeper and the whole way around the parking lot. So. A lot of digging.
Eric, did you want to take the, the canopy question?
Yeah. I apologize if I didn't make that clear on the, on the canopy. Yes, there may be some elevational pruning that's, that's necessary. Again, I would have to go out and look at the. Canopies of those trees specific to this location to see if there would be any need for reduction. What I was referring to in my earlier comments is there wouldn't need to be any. Clearing from the perimeter of the canopy for building clearance. But there may be, generally the, the, the rule is about a fourteen-foot. Clearance from the ground to the lowest branch to allow for delivery trucks and, and other things. So if that's necessary, then, you know, yeah, that would have to be. That would have to be done. So I would, I was referring to building clearance. I apologize if I didn't make that clear.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it, I, I know in the earlier talks we had in June and previously, you know, any, anytime this. Project has been brought up, there's been a lot of talk about saving as many trees as possible. Right now for the main footprint of everything, other than what's in the right of way already, which is town property, it looks like we're only saving three. And the impacts to those three are going to be pretty substantial potentially. So. I'm not really in support of the amount of trees we're saving. That's, that's my two cents. So I look forward to hearing it, what tree board has to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. Robert, did you? Answer here. You had a truck impact parking flow business for East Fifth.
Yeah, sorry, I had to walk away for a second, but there was a concern relative to, there are several businesses along Fifth Avenue East. From the roundabout to the park and they're asking questions about, is the parking, some of the parking going to be eliminated? Is there going to be some issues with the radius from the turning of the trucks and so forth? So. I don't know if they've answered that, because I stepped away for a second, but if they can't answer that, that'd be great.
We, we. We, we ran, ran the WB forty truck that we anticipate being the, the largest truck that would be. Able to access this site. And we actually based the site's geometry on the WB forty, being able to access from Sixth Avenue. And then still be able to make the turn onto, to, to Fifth Avenue. That's why there's that, that a bit of a funky angle on the top side of that, that drive aisle. But based on the, the auto turn analysis of this, trucks maneuvering through the site, we don't anticipate. Impacts to the parking across the, the street on Fifth Avenue.
Good. And the reason I brought that up is because, you know, with the new site plan, you showed a negative nine, and now we just increased that negative nine if you're taking away any additional parking on that Fifth Avenue. Area between Fifth or the roundabout and the park. The next comments and or questions I have are from Teresa Shretzen Myers.
Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Teresa Shretzen Myers. I served on the Windermere Tree Board for fifteen years as the chairman. I'm now no longer on the tree board, but I still attend all the continuing education courses. I'm really concerned about this plan. I would love to take you all out there with a DBH tape to measure some of the trees that you plan to take out. Many of these oaks are forty-two, thirty-eight, forty-five inches DBH. We're talking oaks that are. Really large. And if you look at the Davy Tree Calculator. Just a forty-two inch oak that you're planning to remove handles over forty-eight thousand gallons of stormwater. So the trees that are already doing what you need to do are doing that on this lot. And you'll be removing the biggest ones that you need to do. That will, that will mitigate the stormwater issues that you're having by adding more non-permeable surface. In addition, the water that you're talking about going into these drain fields, we're talking about the Butler Chain of Lakes, a pristine waterway, which is the headwaters to the Everglades. So I'm not even sure how you think that this perpilation system is not going to be affecting our Butler Chain, much less the trees. That are doing the storm mitigation that we need right now to keep that water out of the lakes. I urge the town council and you guys and the arborist to go out there with a DBH tape. I've got one in my car. And let's measure these trees and see how much stormwater mitigation you are taking out of the picture by removing these really large trees. Because you're doing a huge disservice to the town and to the Butler Chain by removing these giant oaks that are already doing the stormwater mitigation that we need on the site. I've measured those trees, specifically the ones in between Alan's Ice Cream and the Suzie Car Office. They're massive, massive. And you're talking about taking all the biggest ones out. I think this is a big mistake. I think you should reconfigure your plan. To put the parking elsewhere and find a way to, to work around these trees that are doing the work they need. To keep our Butler Chain clean and our town shaded and doing all the carbon sequestration and water mitigation they're already doing. Thank you.
Teresa, all the trees have been measured with a diameter tape and all of those diameters are in my arborist report. Just, so that information is already available.
But why are you taking the biggest ones out that are doing the most mitigation?
You're, don't ask me that question. I'm not the one who designed the site plan. I just provided the information on the trees. That's a question for the, for the developer.
Yeah, and I also want to remind everybody that just because something's written here doesn't mean this is what will occur. That's why we're having these input sessions. And that's why they are so very important. Thank you. All right, and this is, the, the next question was. How many meetings that we will have for this? We'll have at least three. There likely could be more. So this is the first of those.
Mayor, as far as the non-running questions, the next person I have queued up is Stephen Withers with Pamela. On Total Oakdale to be the next person.
Sounds good. Stephen?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Um, just three comments. First about the number of meetings. When we had the DRB last year. We were told we would see the elevations, which were actually required for the zoning, but did not. Happen. They said we'd see at least three opportunities to review the elevation and the concept plans. Well, of course. This presentation is needed, but it's only a thirty percent civil presentation. It's not a thirty percent design presentation. So that, I think we're going to have more than three, if this is counting as one. Because the town really should have a, a chance to review the plans and concepts more than twice. In terms of the exfiltration, I'm not a civil engineer and. Don't understand all the requirements, but I did sit in a meeting when we were doing the town offices with the. The South Florida Water Management people. And their comment was very specifically, they do not allow. Exfiltration systems anymore. So we had to hurry around on that project to convince them that the exfiltration system under Main Street was adequate and maintained. And they gave us an agreement to go ahead. I just hope that Kimberly Horn has discussed this project with the South Florida, because I hate to see this much work be. Turned sideways by that comment I heard on the town project. The third comment I have relates to Fifth Avenue. That site originally had parallel parking in front of the shops along there. The shops requested more parking and to have it to be face-in parking. To accomplish that, they cut ten feet off of the driving lane between the back of the parking spaces and the north curb line. So that drive is ten foot short of width of what it was originally intended. So my concern is as trucks come out there, they're going to be taking up that entire remaining lane. So you don't have any cars coming past the trucks. I would suggest that you look at the north curb. And looking at the sixty-foot right of way, and there could possibly be nine parking spaces inserted on the north side of Fifth Avenue. To help mitigate some of the things what you are talking about. Brad Carnita said there was a second option for dealing with the nine cars, and that was to pay a town a mitigation fee. So either. The developer could develop cars on the north side of that Fifth Avenue or. The, you know, the town could do it, but somewhere I think that needs to be studied for truck access and for. What happened in the past, because it's not an adequate. Size drive through there. Those are my three comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen, and thank you for your extensive comments that you sent out as well. Those will be part of the record.
Next one I have is Pam, and she lives on Twelve Oaks to Oakdale Street.
Good evening. Yes, my name is Pamela Scrimshaw. She has like school, and I'm thrilled that you're going to be taking out the invasive species. I would hope that anything that gets put in would be native species, because. Why should the town of Windermere look like every development around, the same old, same old, same old landscaping? It's boring. We have marvelous, marvelous native plants. They could be used, and yes, they can be, and yes, there are nurseries that sell them, and yes, people know how to do it. So. Not doing it is just lazy. I do like these Zoom meetings. Somebody said they would prefer to be in person. If we could go to maybe a hybrid, because I can see the maps. I can zoom in on them. I cannot see them when I'm sitting in the back of the town hall. So I prefer this. It also helps the people that have, for some reason, or they cannot participate. I am distressed beyond belief. That on that property, you're going to save three trees. No. That's, that's not even remotely okay. These trees are old. They're doing their job, like Teresa said. We need them, and I have faith in y'all. Y'all can figure ways to do a better job. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, and then if we're going to the chat questions, because I don't see anybody else that has signed up for public comment. There's a question from Vicki Hurst. My question is in regards to building setbacks and the wall on the north side of the property. Her speaker's not working on her computer. There are setbacks for residences. Are there setback requirements not the same for commercial? Also with a space, maybe space for a landscape buffer on the north side. I believe either Brad or Marcus can answer this question.
Robert, I can, I can address that one. Yeah, so it is different for the terms of the setbacks in the downtown overlay district. So it's, it's not the same as residential. So in the downtown overlay district, as part of the design standards, the intent of that is to create like an urban environment, a walkable environment. So unlike other parts of the town. The way the setbacks are required here in the, the overlay district is for a rear setback. They have to be a hundred and twenty feet from the buffer zone. Well, really what that is, is the project can't go beyond this line. So that's, that's the rear setback. There, the town design guidelines don't want the buildings to front on the, on the, on the front property. They want them to be up along the sidewalk, up along there. So the same was that. Again, there are no, and there are no side setbacks either required within the downtown overlay district. And it actually does require at least eighty percent of the buildings to be on the, the street frontage there. So it is different, but it's a different animal because it's a downtown kind of development, and that is also why it has to go through the PUD. To have the review by the town council, have the public be able to see it. Because these aren't the standard setbacks, like in the. because these aren't the standard setbacks, like for residential properties, twenty-five in the front, twelve and a half percent of the lot width on the sides, and thirty-five or fifty if you're on the water. But here in the downtown, those don't apply. These downtown ones do. And so that's how that works.
All right, Brad, just so you know, your screen is not shared, so we're unable to see the site plan. I can enable it back. And the other question is from Dana Floyd. Who can the residents or how can the residents of Oakdale or any other town resident meet with me on this project to discuss the landscaping buffer and wall? And I know that we're going to be having follow-up discussions and public meetings and hearings. And we'll give more specifics on what the tree boards recommendations are for landscaping and also taking a look at the wall too in future plans. Is that correct, Brad?
That is correct. Yes, sir. Again, for residents, also, if you have questions, please feel free to reach out to me at any point. And I try my best to answer questions that you have.
There's another question that's popped up. Is there a tree survey that's on the town website? The tree survey that we received is anything that has to do with the middles is on the agenda packet. And if we receive anything additional, I think Mr. Hoyer's report, we can go ahead and make that available as well. Everything is public record.
And as of today, we do not have the actual tree survey or arborist report. We do not have that yet. But as you said, Robert, as soon as we get that, we will make that publicly available.
Mayor, this is the last comment and or question. So if you want to go ahead and public comment and move forward with town council comment, we can do that at this time.
Thank you, Robert. I appreciate everyone's input and, you know, definitely some consistent themes there. I expect we're going to hear some similar things from council. I see that Andy Williams has his hand raised, and we'll go ahead and start with you, Andy. You're muted.
Sorry about that. Good evening. Couple, I've got a couple of questions. What first two are to Robert? Robert, do we still have a sidewalk plan for between Lake and Lake Street and Main that runs on the north side of the street? We voted on it four years ago. Is that still, we had lots of discussions, a lot of engineering on a bunch of trees down that side of the road?
Whereas we still do have plans for the interconnection. And once they get a building footprint, we can see like how the facades connect with the sidewalk plans.
Okay, and I don't know if they have those plans, because it looks like we lose all of the sidewalk once we get closer to six, based on the site plan. The next one, Robert, what is our closest fire station that services us? Who services us now? Is it the one on McGuire still?
Without the automatic aid, we have a COE, which is over in the Public Shopping Plaza.
Okay, so McGuire.
McGuire, but I believe the closest one is in Orange County Fire Rescue that is located just to the east.
On the one on Apopka Vineyard.
On Apopka Vineyard.
Correct. I'm leading in, my question's leading into the truck routing plan. If we get a delivery driver and most of them come down Main Street from the north, what's the plan for getting them in there? Because there's no easy way to go around. I mean, you're going around Lake Down if you're coming from the north. Cisco, if we got a restaurant, Cisco's to the north are coming down McGuire. I see a lot of the deliveries because of Dixie Cream across the street. In this truck plan, I don't see any common sense or anyway, if a truck does come down McGuire on to Main, how are they getting in? There's no place to go. If they pull down Fifth and then pull in backwards, it doesn't look like there's enough room for them to even to turn out, back out on to Sixth, then head into the roundabout.
That's a question for Marcus to.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I meant to switch from you to the developers.
We'll have to take a look at options there. I do see your point and the concern there. But we'll have to take a look at options for what we can do for that level of routing.
Yeah, because that's my concern, because, hey, delivery drivers are going to come in the shortest route. Once they're in town, that's where the problem comes, because the side streets aren't big enough to hold a truck of that size, much less make most of the corners. So that would be something I would look at, trying to configure, how do they get turned around? If needed, or can they go in straight and then come back out on Sixth?
Gotcha.
Ms. Roswell, your question about fire too, what I will do is I will forward these plans to COE Fire Department and have them look at it, provide us any comments or concerns they may have in terms of their accessibility with this plan.
Because if our truck coming down McGuire wouldn't be able to get in there, well, they could come in backwards.
So we will, yeah, so I will send it to COE Fire to get their comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you, sir. Council, any further thoughts and comments? I see Mr. Martini's hand up. Councilman Martini.
I think Tony had his hand up before me, but.
By all means, go ahead, Bill.
Seniority. It finally pays off.
Age before beauty.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for your work on this and everybody for participating in this. I only see Stephen from the D R B committee. I would prefer to see all of the D R B on these calls, because they are going to be this, these items are going to go back before the D R B. So if we could, please encourage the D R B to attend these meetings. Maybe put them on the communication list, the email list, and also Susan Carter as well, so that she gets the information directly and not at the last minute from me. So that would be a suggestion I have. I do have some questions about, has sewer ever been talked about or looked at? The possibility of getting sewers to the corner or the downtown area and the cost involved. Brad and I had a little back and forth on this today, and I'm not sure if you made any progress there, Brad.
Yeah, Ms. Martini, unfortunately, we were not able to track down that information about Estancia Lake Down Reserve. We did look at, we do have copies of the bonding, but that didn't include the cost of the extension to the property. It was only just the internal part of it. So I apologize. I was, I did not have that data available.
That's okay. I was just trying to get a feel for what the cost was for Estancia and/or Rosar Reserve to bring sewer to their site. And if it would be even feasible to bring it to our downtown.
Councilman Martini, we did have, we are still working on a scope to do a overall study and then give you a cost on initial design. But based on our initial conversations that we've had with Orange County, we would have to bring in a wastewater line from Chase and five thirty-five. It wouldn't be coming down Sixth Avenue. So they have capacity in their plants to the west, but not capacity in some of their plants to the east. So based on what they've told us is that we would have to develop a line that would go from downtown south along Chase to the five thirty-five corridor.
That's a long way.
Yes, sir.
Very costly. Okay.
Yeah, and it wouldn't be eligible for any C D V G grants, because, you know, COE gets C D V G grants based on commercial development, but it's all based upon how many jobs you're to create and whether or not the applicants are willing to open up their books to state review.
I know Oakland is getting some of that money also for sewer. Okay. Well, at some point, we're going to have to look at that seriously. So the wall on, the wall on Oakdale, we're going to run that straight to the corner. And obviously, one of the biggest concerns that the tree board has, I'm the liaison for the tree board. But, you know, the residents in the tree board have is that large clump of trees that's on the northeast corner of the site, maintaining that. So we may have to do a modified, you know, instead of running the wall right up to those trees or into the root zone for those, we may have to think about doing some modifications to that to make sure that we don't damage those trees in the root system, because I'm assuming those trees are hundreds of years old. And whether they look perfect or not, you know, we need to save them as much as possible. So Eric, the arborist, on the, you had eighty-two trees on your plan, thirty-one are invasive. What were the other fifty-one trees? Rough, what were they, oaks? What kind of species were they?
Yes, sir, mostly, mostly live oaks, some laurel oaks, some cabbage palms. Let me see. Cherry laurel, which is a native species. A potocarpus, which I kind of debated whether I should measure that as a put that on there or not, but.
They're gigantic, but yeah.
It was a tree, it was a tree-sized potocarpus, so I added it. That was pretty much it. Laurel oaks, live oaks, handful of cabbage palms, and then those miscellaneous species that I just mentioned. Yes, sir.
So of those fifty-one, you know, acceptable trees, we're taking out forty-eight of them, it looks like at this point. I think we need, we need to, well, I mean, if we're only keeping three.
Well, let me clarify that. I measured eighty-four trees on the survey. One was dead. There was a dead queen's palm, so, and then there were thirty-one invasive, so that's thirty-two. So that left fifty-two trees. And of those, I believe with the three on the site and the remainder along Oakdale, there's about twenty-one of those fifty-two remaining. So it's a little misleading when you say you're only leaving three, because, you know, twenty or so were along the Oakdale right away.
Okay, some of twenty. All right, some of those are in the right way. Okay. Well, that's good. That helps with the clarification, because I think a lot of people think, you know, or thought that there were only going to be three left. When was your survey done, sir?
Oh, two weeks ago.
Okay, and why was it not included in the documentation that we have here tonight?
I submitted my report to V three. You'd have to ask that question to them.
Okay, V three, that's a question for you then. When we first started this project, we had the same issue where there was a tree survey that was provided, that was seventeen, eighteen years old. But it turns out that there was actually a new tree survey that was not provided when this project first started. It was not provided to the D R B. It was not provided to the town council. And it caused a lot of ill will with everyone. So my recommendation is, if you've got anything that would benefit the council, the residents, the tree board, as far as information goes, that it gets submitted as soon as possible and not after the fact.
Yeah, this is Trey with V three. I'd say a couple of things. One, we have no issue sharing any data with y'all. Part of when things get shared is we obviously get the data and need to digest it, review it, analyze it, which is part of the process. And with the way this is laid out for the ordinance, we have multiple opportunities. And I assure you that you'll have everything that we can have available to you in a timely manner. And certainly you'll have the tree survey and all that other data in advance of our second public meeting. So, you know, there's no intention to withhold anything. Whether there was an issue in the past with that or not, you won't have that issue with this group, I assure you.
Yeah, I know you guys weren't on board. I appreciate that. You know, the more information that we can get, the better off everyone will be. I saw on the plan, as far as the parking spaces go, there's a buried propane tank. Is that site not served by Lake Kapapa gas, natural gas? Or is there a reason to have propane over natural gas? Because that seems like it takes up three or four.
That tank, that was actually, the site plan that we're submitting to you, we're also using as our leasing exhibit to go out and talk to prospective tenants. And what we wanted to do with our seven thousand foot building, because we anticipate probably having a single user, that if, in fact, it was somebody that would want to either use it, say if it was a hardware store or something that was coming in that they wanted to sell propane, this is where they could put it to keep it away from the buildings and out of traffic. So it's not like it's being, it's not a unit that's being placed to serve gas for the buildings.
Okay, so I mean, you could gain four parking spaces there if you had the blue, whatever, the blue tanks, you know, like they have at Walgreens up the street or.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes. So I mean, if you're looking, if you're looking to gain parking spots, you know, it seems like a lot.
Yeah, we can put a couple in there, but remember, we have, you have a backup situation with the parking that faces Oakdale. So there might be a couple. You're absolutely correct. And we'll certainly look at that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So as far as that, the buffer wall goes, the wall that's on Sixth Avenue that faces Conroy or Sixth Avenue, is that the same height? Is that six-foot wall? Can that be shorter? Like maybe a three-foot wall with a hedge in front of it for optics, you know, to make the site a little less closed off looking.
Feel more open, certainly. Yeah, I believe it's the ordinance that required us to have the six there.
It was a specific item outlined in the order.
Yeah, I know. I know it is. I'm just for, you know, food for thought for everybody. Maybe reduce the height of that. Worth that. I think. Yeah, I think that was all for my question. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilperson Martini. Just a quick note as well. So in terms of, you know, piggybacking a little bit on what Councilperson Martini mentioned about the data and the information getting to us, also those last minute changes, while well-intended, also kind of wreak havoc on us too, because, as you guys know, we have a public notice that we have to abide by. And I want to make sure that the public has the opportunity to have all of this information in time to digest it, so they can have their input and council can have that and have their input as well. So we can be giving you guys all the best information and make sure that everything's as transparent as possible. So let's really focus on that. I know you guys will, and I appreciate it. Councilperson Data.
Thanks, Mayor. So first, I want to piggyback on one of your comments. I want to thank Mr. Withers for providing a great plan review. I just want to confirm that Brad, that's going to be turned over to V three for design inputs and that they will cover requirements based on that.
Yes, sir. Actually, I've already submitted it to them. They already have it.
Perfect. So initially, when we talked about this project in June, one of the big discussion points was the size of the septic drain field and the tenant load. I don't think I heard it in the discussion this evening. But can you guys, either V three or Mr. Geiger, kind of go through the use of each of these facilities and what that basis is of design is?
Trey, Brett, did you want to kick?
Yeah, I mean, I would say at this point, especially at the stage of where we're at in conceptuals and town comment, we don't have any signed leases at this point. I would tell you that there is good demand for this. I think both from an operator user's perspective, you know, in our mind, I definitely think you'll see a restaurant here that serves the needs of the residents of Windermere. You'll definitely see retail here. I mean, there's a realty office there now. I think there's intentions to still have a realty office there. I think you'll see probably some insurance, just kind of professional uses possibly there that you can see in a retail environment as well. Service level retail, those types of things. I just, I don't want to speculate who it'll be or what it'll be until we can actually get our final plan to where we're not signing leases or really getting down the road with things that we can't deliver to the user. So the beauty of this process, as it was laid out, the ordinance and as it will be handled here is, as we get further along and really refine this process and take into account all this feedback and where we're going to be, we'll be able to then in turn go to the market, finalize our users. Trust me, we want to get this thing completely filled up with great tenants, and we'll share that as it's certainly available. But I just don't have a signed lease with anybody at this point. Uh, but I just don't have a signed lease with anybody at this point. Frankly, uh, to be candid, I don't have agreed upon M L I with any one user. Uh, so it'd just be a little too soon to speak of specific brands, but those uses and those types of tenants is who, uh, I would envision us putting in there.
So just getting into the basis of design, because early on this discussion prior to y'alls arrival, you know, um, one of the things that we were discussing is the size of the, uh, leach field versus the use of the facility. And there's obviously a trade off there because any, if you put a large restaurant in the facility, obviously that drives a larger drain field. So, you know, not, not everybody on this call gets into looking into septic, uh, calculations like a civil engineer does. But, you know, so I, I went in there and just, just for everyone to, to understand the basis of design for sizing this, this, um, drain field was an eighty one person, uh, restaurant, five thousand, five hundred square feet of office space in building one. And then Marcus, I think you had a little typo on your calc for building two. It says eighty one hundred square feet, um, on building two. So that, that should drop, um, obviously with those calc deltas and the, the smaller size of building one and the, the lower capacity, I think you'll be able to hit your, um, parking targets, um, with changing that around. But, you know, obviously there's, there's trade offs there. I don't expect y'all to have, um, leases in hand, but obviously you need to go into this with a basis of design, um, to, to make sure that we're hitting these targets, um, as we develop this. So, you know.
Sorry. I, I was going to say that I, we don't intend to, to fill this thing up with restaurants for what you exactly just said. Uh, and, and we talked about basis of design and, and I mean, we've worked, can we learn for fifteen years on various projects? There is an expectation and an understanding on our side and obviously Kimmy's side. We can't go put ten thousand square feet or fifteen thousand square feet of restaurants here or we'll blow up our idea that we can have, uh, you know, onsite septic. So that has been on the discussion table from day one. And that's why I think as, as you alluded to, professional office, service retail, things that are lower demand on the, on septic, uh, is, is things that we're looking at and frankly, things I think that'll be well received in the market. But, but a component of a restaurant, uh, we do think is important and something in the, you know, three thousand and forty five hundred square foot range is probably where we'll land on our restaurants.
Okay. Um, the next, next point I wanted to kind of just talk about, and I think it's kind of been touched on before, but, um, I kind of wanted to throw it out to Robert. Uh, the sixth, um, and Main Street Circle, um, this building seems to encroach on it, uh, a little bit. Um, is there any plan for, uh, a development of that roundabout? Obviously we're having congestion issues there. Um, is there any, um, plans to put a second turn lane at that corner to alleviate some of the congestion? And if so, um, you know, what impact is that going to have on this development?
Yeah, they currently have to do a transportation analysis for this development and we're going to hope that it ties into our future plans with the Sixth Avenue Roundabout and any improvements to Sixth Avenue Roundabout. So there will be like a proportionate share agreement that will have to be entered into between the developer and the town. Uh, so that'll be worked out at that time, whether it's through a runaway donation and/or if we can move it to the Northwest a little bit, um, depending upon how it's laid out.
I just, Robert, just to clarify, well, the, the traffic analysis was completed as part of the P U D rezoning. So we do have that analysis and the volumes and things to do. The next part is Robert just spoke about to determine what that proportionate share would be as part of that future improvement to that roundabout.
Yes, and sorry about that, but the, the only addition that we would have to discuss would be the, the cost factor, because there has been escalation the last two years since it was actually completed.
Yeah, I'm just concerned, Robert, that if it's built as, uh, laid out in the plan, we're gonna, we're gonna eliminate our ability to do any expansion at that corner. So, you know, that may be something as we go through, uh, looking at the, at the overall planning, Brad, we may want to look at what that looks like for an additional lane and that, in that roundabout and, and plan accordingly. And then the last thing, I, I kind of want to just pile on with the trees, you know, originally when we discussed in June, um, we had a lot of discussion about saving the trees on the site and, you know, saving that minimal amount is, is kind of problematic to me. So I'm, I'm curious to see what the tree board has to say when they bring it back to council. Um, and that's all I've got right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson David. Stephen, do you have a quick comment or do you need a little more time?
No, just my quick comment is that, uh, Brad responded to my, uh, letter to you guys. And he did an excellent job. And so I'm hoping he shares that so that, uh, V three doesn't have to repeat all of his answers, which are excellent. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Stephen, I believe that, that was shared. Brad, that was shared, right?
Yes, I did share it with CB three and I also did share it with Mayor and the council as well. Um, if you would like, Mayor, I can, you know, just go quickly through it publicly if you would like me to do that. Um, whatever you would like me to do.
Brad, let me, let me make sure that we have all council comment and then we'll circle right back to you if that's okay.
Absolutely.
I've got a couple of council people who we haven't heard from. I want to make sure that you guys have the opportunity to, to chime in here. I think we've get, we're getting a lot of good input.
I, I don't have too much, Mayor. Uh, you know, it's just really piggybacking off of, you know, I, I know they're going to lose a lot of trees on this, but I would like to see a pretty extensive landscaping plans, especially on the perimeter where there may be room, uh, to not just put ornamentals, uh, probably not ornamentals at all, but actually, you know, real shit shade trees, which I, I, I believe there's a preliminary plan that says as such, but, uh, I, I want to make sure we fall, uh, through with that. Um, you know, I don't, now that we're maybe eight short, uh, in the parking spots, I'd like to try to find where we can fill in that gap uh, a little bit. Uh, but I do appreciate the fact because those two oak trees that are going to be in the middle are absolutely huge. Um, and I believe the first plan that we saw, the preliminary had those, uh, had about sixteen parking spots over that. Uh, so there is some lost spots, uh, in that area to make that a big island to protect those trees. And then also, um, I definitely want to make sure we keep the one there, uh, in that courtyard area, because I really think that's going to be, you know, a nice entry, uh, you know, for our downtown business district for people to passively walk through and such, you know, underneath the canopy.
Um, To your comment about that real quick, we actually redesigned that building number one to accommodate that tree specifically.
So yeah, I see it, see it.
So that we would have, uh, you know, proper root ball.
Right. Yeah, it does look a little skinnier, uh, towards the Main Street side, uh, I think than the last ones. Um, do we have, I guess it would be a nice to have an updated overlay to, um, you know, where the current buildings are. And maybe people would have, uh, better understanding of what those new uh, buildings look like. It looks like you're not moving too much on the south side. Um, from what I'm seeing in the original overlays, but of course butted right up to that property line on the front. But I know that's a requirement, uh, correct for the, uh, uh, master plan that those, those buildings have to be directly on that line.
Yes, sir. At least eighty percent of the building frontage has to be on that line. Yes, sir. So minimum eighty percent.
Yeah. So I'm wondering if we're encroaching at all on that south side, but all I can tell is look at two side by sides from the original uh, stuff that we saw back in June, there is an overlay there, but it doesn't really have measurements. So I can't really tell, you know, if it is moving closer to Sixth Avenue. Um, you know, but it certainly has a perception of it with the dotted lines there, which I think is just outlining, uh, you know, where uh, you know, the, where the, everything has to fit inside for the master plan overlay.
Right.
Thank you, Councilperson Sap. I appreciate all those comments. Councilperson David, you're good?
I'm good. I was just going to piggyback on it. I, I really would like to see what the tree board has to say and what they, um, bring back because I, I am a little disappointed that, um, more trees are going to be missing than, than not. So, um, um, and then the parking was the other thing for me. I do like the idea that we're gaining some parking back because the, um, the way, uh, the building is, I, I like, um, with, uh, Councilperson David, the, the sewer size, I think that that would gain some parking as well. So if we can relook that, um, so those were just basically piggybacking on everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. So, you know, just in terms of my thoughts, um, there's a couple of things I, one is kind of a question that I, I know with residential septic tanks, you'd never park on top of them. Is that, is that accurate with these larger systems? Is there a mechanism to, um, somehow allow that to occur without damaging the septic tank?
No, for, for, for this one to, um, at least for the, the drain, drain fields, we, uh, don't want to park on top of it. Um, we, we have to, to keep that as, uh, open space. Um, we, we, we can't do any, any, uh, paving over the top of that.
Okay. Oh, I knew we couldn't pave over it. I just wanted to ask the question. I'm like, hey, you know, maybe, right? So, um, you know, you always look for the low hanging fruit. Uh, certainly, um, the trees, uh, you, you've heard tonight, the trees are going to be an issue. We need to double down and we need to look at that. Um, if we are going to make, you know, it's my feeling if we're going to make accommodations on parking, um, we're, we're going to need to, to save more trees, um, and we're going to have to, uh, to look at, at how we're going to landscape buffer. Um, you know, certainly, you know, you guys do this all the time. You know, we have the guidelines to make sure we get a, a, you know, a, a setting that, that works for the community. But if there are things that are, you know, for example, you know, a great example is the three foot wall along the one wall, along the one road on six, that makes a lot of sense. So, you know, please don't just give us what, you know, the standards are one thing, but also if we've got something that we can hold up next to that and say, hey, doesn't this work better? Uh, certainly we want to benefit from everybody's knowledge here. Some of us can calculate septic tanks. Some of us can, you know, do the, do the trees inside out. Um, and you know, and, and, and some of us build shopping centers and, and, and different developments. We want to know, you know, we do want to get that, the benefit of all that knowledge and at least get to take a look at it, put it in front of the public and, uh, and, and make some, make some decisions there and we'll help you do that. I think the next piece to my thoughts are we need to move beyond too deep. Um, I've done a few of these in, in, in the town and in my time on council and as being mayor. The more we can put in front of people that they can see, touch and feel, the, the more, um, people are going to have good feelings about the project. They're going to be able to understand it better. They're going to be able to see the benefits. We're going to be able to work through some of the challenges a little easier as well. So those things like facades, those things like, you know, the overlays, um, you know, really good uh, drawings of the trees and what, what it's going to look like. That's, I feel like where we need to go. Um, you know, I think we've done and given as much thought and input and, and advice on where we are today and what we have in terms of, of, of flat drawings. I think it's, you know, we need to really take it to that next level. We need to make sure that underground sewage or, or drainage is going to be able to be installed there, uh, those type of things. So, you know, I think that's just my advice from how we have been able to successfully gather input and, and move projects forward. These are things that we've tripped over too. So, you know, just my, it's just my personal take and my personal advice. I think that'll help us a lot. Um, I see Councilperson Martini has her hand up. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, thanks. Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick things, uh, and this is a question for Councilman Williams. Uh, if, if you could, um, what, how big is the Dixie Cream Cafe Restaurant? How many square feet is that? I'm trying to get a perspective on, uh, that, that versus what they're proposing building new.
Dixie Cream's about twenty five hundred.
Twenty five hundred square?
Yeah. And it's actually slightly smaller. Their drain field is roughly five thousand square feet of drain field for that restaurant.
Okay. But does that include the, the kitchen area and all that as well?
Yeah, yeah. Twenty five hundred includes everything. And I think I'm actually a little on the big side on that. It's probably closer to, to probably twenty two hundred to twenty three hundred.
Okay. And V three Capital Group, what, what's the size of the, the restaurant that you're possibly proposing? Sorry, cut you off.
I said, we're not proposing any specific side of the restaurant at this point. We don't have a user. And we, we were assuming somewhere between three and five thousand feet, I guess, would be a probably a, a healthy range to say. Uh, as I did say, I don't think we could, uh, accommodate it, nor do I think that there's a use for something that would be six, ten thousand square feet of restaurant space. So I, I, we understand the issue on the drain field and understand that a restaurant is a heavy user of it, uh, and that, that was always had, had to be uh, contemplated in our design. So I hear you guys on that.
Well, it looks like, it looks like from the plans that there's room for an expansion or contraction in that drain field if needed, depending on the, the, uh, specific tenants. So, uh, and, and lastly, and also about the drain field, you know, the mayor was talking about, you know, maybe thinking outside the box uh, and coming up with solutions that are better, not necessarily going by, you know, by the book on every single one of these. I personally would not be opposed to actually having, having that wall zigzag around the drain field as it's shown on the plans tonight for two reasons. One, it would increase, would increase the green space buffer, uh, for the, the residents on Oakdale Street. And two, it would also avoid that huge clump of trees on the northwest corner completely by not having, you know, a wall that may encroach on the root space for that. And I'm, I'm finished. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Councilperson David.
I'm sorry. I do have one more question. Would golf cart parking add some parking in that area if we can park golf carts over the drain field versus them taking up parking spots? Cause I know a lot of residents drive their golf carts down. I don't know the weight, the difference of a car. I know you can't drive over a drain field because, um, we have one. So I, I know that, but is a golf cart the same weight? In other words, could we have a couple of that designated for golf cart parking only to gain some parking slots? Just a thought.
I, I think that we would, uh, struggle getting it passed, um, um, Department of Health and, um, D E P permitting. Um, just, just because if they, they see it on there, they're, they're really going to, to ding us on it.
Yep. And it would have, it would have to be noted as parking. And even when you put golf cart, the, the engineering requirements for a parking lot, even if it's just golf cart are the same. So then you run into these issues of impermeability and, 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 and weight, you know? So it could be an issue. Not to say that we haven't thought about the golf carts and.
And for the record, I think it's, it would be awesome if that could count.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's why we talked about it because.
I was trying, I was trying.
Well, it may count, it may count in the, in the negotiations with council over the parking ratios that we are going to have going forward. You know, maybe some exceptions based on if there is designated golf cart parking, because we do have a lot of residents. That's their only means of. Well, transferred.
We know.
Yeah, we, and, and we have, uh, we have real state of the villages and, and areas where that's common. So I mean, it's not, it's not a typical. I, I drive one. So again, I have one. I run there. It's not every day.
Thank you, guys. Hey, uh, Councilperson David, you, did you, did you have your hand up?
I did. Real quick question for Councilman Williams. Um, I, I got the square footage of the Dixie Cream. How many seats? Cause that's the, the design requirement is, is it's forty gallons of, uh, per day, per seat.
Yeah, they, they started out with, uh, fifty and then went in for variance and they are at sixty now.
Okay. So just by comparison, the, the design, um, that's in this package is eighty one. So a little bit bigger restaurant.
It's a, it's a really big system that, that they're designing. Absolutely.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
No worries.
The, the, the other portion of it too, when we, we talk about the drain field is, um, F D E P and, uh, the Department of Health, they, they limit the, um, amount of flow that you can have going to the, the drain field. So the site's going to be capped um, to a certain amount, um, uh, uh, based on if you're pulling from, uh, public water use or if you're pulling from a private well, a well usage. So just, just that based on that, that cap, we're going to be very, very limited on, uh, what can actually come in here. So it, it can't all be, be a restaurant because we won't be able to, to fit the amount of drain field that we actually need for it. So it, it's, it's like going to actually end up equalizing where we can only fit so much drain, a drain field on the, the site before we just had, just have to, just have to say, we can't do anymore.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Hoyer. I see your hand up.
Oh, yeah. Thanks. I was going to say if, if, uh, and nobody else has any questions.
And nobody else has any questions for me. I I need to sign off. I've got another place I need to be. But I don't want to cut anybody short if they have any other questions, but.
Counsel, any further questions for Mr. Hoyer, the arborist? Seeing none, we'll let you go upon your evening, sir.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And see you next time.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further comments or concerns? At this time, staff? Any items that we need to be aware of and or address here?
None.
All right. Thank you all. I do appreciate everyone's participation. I I know there is some debate over the virtual concept in terms of the meeting, you know. Hybrids do not work very well for. The town and if we're going to have this number of meetings, certainly the. The virtual format is helpful, but I think what I'll I'll discuss with Robert is that we will. We will do some alternating so we can have a little a bit of both. I will say just, and this is not a scientific. Opinion, but my my opinion on the virtual meetings is that we actually get more people and more participation. But I do understand that they're not for everybody, and we will certainly mix and match and and try to have a little bit of everything for. For this particular project. Sound good? All right, and I I do thank everybody for all their input. I I think when input's consistent, it means that there's clear. Items that need to be addressed, and I think we saw a lot of that tonight. So I'm hoping that we provided excellent input for the applicant. And I appreciate everyone doing that. So if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we will adjourn at eight twelve PM.
Or adjourn.
Thank you all.